Well, I would like to call this meeting to order at 5:32 PM. And if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, that would be great. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'll turn it over to a roll call, please.
Mrs. Giller?
Here.
Mr. Pascal?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mrs. Dion?
Here.
Mrs. Carey?
Excuse?
Mr. Annely?
Here.
And Mr. Nolan?
Here.
And just to start off, this irregularly scheduled meeting is primarily due to the county falling below the 4% positive COVID transmission rate. And this allows us as a board, along with, in conjunction with our Albany County Board of Health and our staff, Jeff, our athletic director, coming up with plans that allow us to continue and look at what sports we may be able to offer. And so that was sort of the sudden nature for anyone that might be watching, looking or appeared sudden. This is something I think has worked for quite some time, but this is a point in time where this is something that we can do, and we're trying to prioritize getting it in as soon as we can. So I will turn this over to, you know, Jeff or Peggy, is there anything you guys want to chime in here to get things started? Anything that I didn't cover just now that you think is important to add?
I have, I just have a few things to add. So tonight is about athletics because of the metrics, but we also believe that participation in other extracurricular activities are very important for students. And we will be exploring what we can do with health, health and safety measures in place for the future. So we will have some continued discussions. I wanted to mention that. I also wanted to say that, first of all, thank you for Jeff. I know it's been a whirlwind and you've been very, very busy. And as part of this, Jeff has prepared a sports preparedness plan. We met with Dr. De Jersey, our medical director on Friday. She advised of a few changes, which we made, and so it was approved, approved this morning. A link of the plan was sent to the community with information about tonight's meeting, and it's also posted on our website. And Jeff is here to discuss our sports specific recommendations, as well as to answer any questions about the plan.
Thank you, Peggy, and thank you to everyone for, for meeting in this forum to, you know, give our, our student athletes a chance to get on, you know, the court or, or mats or whatever sport that we're hosting, you know, in, in this condensed season. And it's been thrust upon us really quickly. We did put a plan together that covers a lot of, a lot of the safety criteria. And the, and the, and the biggest one is probably to talk about family ID and students being registered on family ID and see, and completing their health history forms, which they would normally do in, in a regular season or a regular year. But they also have, you know, COVID-19 agreement to sign and also see, understand the risks that, that are, the potential risks in playing sports during COVID-19. So, and some of the safety protocols that we have, obviously screening will be very important. We will screen our coaches, our athletes on a daily basis using forms that we've created and use, you know, adapted from the National Federation of High School Sports and the New York State Department of Health, and keep strict attendance of, of each event and limiting the size of events in practice, you know, so having just one team in a gym, being assigned that, that gym for the entire season. We will not have spectators at events, and that is pretty much a Section 2 requirement, that we will not have any spectators in our, in our gyms during this time. Parents can watch live streamed events on, on the National Federation of High School Sports. I could talk more about that later if anybody has any questions on that. But those, those are just some of the safety protocols. We did put an entire plan together, following all the guidance from all, all the different parts of our departments of health and NISFA and the NFHS. My, my recommendations would be to have varsity in, varsity girls' basketball and varsity boys' basketball only, and to not have JV this year. I have a lot of reasons for, for not having JV, which, you know, a lot are around the health and safety protocols, but some, but some other things as well. And I can, I can speak to those if you want. And we're also recommending varsity competitive cheer. Varsity competitive cheer doesn't have a set schedule. They won't be hosting any big invitationals like they normally do, but there are maybe some chances to do some virtual competitions. And I've, I've spoken with my coach about even having, if we just have to, they come up with their, their own routines and perform it in our gym, and we can livestream that to our, to our families and to our, into our, our community. So those are, those were the sports that, that we, that I were, I was recommending at this time.
You had mentioned the, first of all, Jeff, thank you. I can't imagine what it's like being an athletic director or principal or any of you in this, in this time. I'm amazed you're still standing or sitting or you're, you're even conscious at this point. And I hate to, I hate to bring, to ask you, but I just have to, because I know I'll be asked, the, the lower levels, the JV, the, the modified, what is your, what is your thinking on that? Because obviously those kids want to play as, as much as, as much as anyone. So I just would want to know your, your rationale for varsity only.
Sure. So, so there's, there's, like I said, there's a lot of different reasons. The first is you have to have teams to play. And no one, no one in our league is offering the modified level at this time. The one exception might be Mahonason, which they won't be playing a game schedule from what I've been told. They may do some scrimmages against some teams like the suburban council, but I think even some of those larger leagues aren't really having a schedule for modified basketball at this time. JV, and this, this goes against every fiber of my being of not having a, any type of sports or just making it one level, but when you put everything together and see everything that's, that has to happen during this, during this time, it's, I see it being very difficult. The first one being health and safety, having too many kids in a gym poses a problem. So you take a JV varsity doubleheader in basketball, you go from, from 25 people in your gym to now 50, maybe 60 at the same time. And that, that's, that's difficult. They have to have their own, their own practice times. The JV and varsity, which would normally practice together, really, that goes against all the guidance currently right now, they would have to have separate gyms. And that then takes away a little bit from our other varsity programs. The, we have soccer and potentially football and volleyball. So those teams need to start to get ready for their seasons. They haven't, they, most of them haven't done anything in a long period of time. So we need to start getting those programs into the gym now so that they can prepare for the seasons. They've, they've been, we, just to prevent injury and, and work on, on skills and things like that. And it wouldn't be, wouldn't be able to happen if we ran a JV and a varsity program at this time. And I think the emphasis should be on varsity sports right now, especially with our seniors, who this is their last opportunity to, to, to play high school sports for some of them. There's going to be a limited amount of practices before games during the winter, but also in the fall two season. So the time we can get them in now, conditioning and doing some skill work is only going to benefit and help prevent injuries. We do have an, a weak overlap between the winter season and then the, the fall two season. So now you're talking, if we did ran a JV level, we'd have JV and varsity having to use, utilize the gyms, but then also adding football, soccer, and all those sports, volleyball, all to the gym at the same time, because most likely they're not going to be outside for the first couple of weeks because of the weather.
And Jeff, are the, are the, in our league, are, are most schools following this, a similar plan as Coles is?
So some, I only know of one, one school in particular that is not running JV girls' basketball, and it was a numbers issue. Lansingburg is not running sports at all currently. And then I know there's a couple of board meetings this week with other, other schools, whether they're running JV or not, I am not sure. But quite, quite a few are running JV.
There are?
They are. You know, we don't know our numbers, unfortunately. We, we did not have an opportunity to do, an intent to play where we, we had a sign up or a meeting, because this was kind of thrown, thrown on us so quickly. We're doing that now for Fall Two, so we have a good idea of what those, what our numbers will be for those sports, and we can make informed decisions at that time.
So, so Jeff, if you could just also, so Fall Two starts March 7th, as you mentioned, and soccer is a medium risk sport, and we're looking at both JV and, and varsity in that. And then at the February 24th board meeting, we'll be talking about the remainder of the high-risk Fall Two sports. Jeff will have numbers at that time to see if we can begin to recommend some JV participation in those levels. And Jeff, I think you also mentioned, this is our first time through these protocols, and you wanted to gain a little bit more familiarity and comfort with it before expanding. We do know that, you know, we, we, we want to provide additional opportunities in the future.
Yeah, this is, this is a lot to throw together in a short period of time when there's so much emphasis on health and safety. There are, there are a lot of protocols. We have not had any other sports on our campus or, nor workouts since, you know, since last year. We just started a couple of basketball this past week. So implementing all this at, at this time is a daunting task, I think. And, you know, with some, some limited resources due to, you know, other things, I, I see it being very, very difficult. As we go through these protocols, it almost seems on a daily basis, the more we do it, the more we understand things and the kids understand the protocols, I think we'll get better at it. And then with some of those sports that happen outdoors, I think that, that gives us more of an opportunity to possibly offer some other levels with, with being outside as, as it's a little bit safer to have outdoor activities.
And now specifically, to be clear, the action or item on the agenda tonight is around high-risk sports. And so you talked about soccer and other, like, we, we are continuing to offer and look at, you know, opportunities in the other sports. But specifically, can you talk about what the, is categorized under high risk?
So winter high-risk sports right now are basketball, competitive cheer, and wrestling. Those are the, the high-risk sports. And then when we get to Fall Two, it's actually volleyball and then football. But right now, we're speaking of high risk, high-risk winter sports.
Thank you.
Excuse the pun, not to throw a curveball at anyone, but at the beginning, Peg, you, you mentioned that we do anticipate trying to get other activities up and running. I just, and, and again, I can't emphasize enough how challenging this must be for you all. I just worry about sending the message out to, to our, our student body on the whole that, you know, sport is more important than, than whatever your other activity is. And I just would hope that we could get the, the message out to students that are involved in, in activities that aren't athletic activities, that, that we, that we plan to, to do something so, so they, they can, they can do what they do, which to them is just as important as, as any sport.
Yeah, this, this is kind of, this high win, high-risk winter sports has kind of spurred a whole movement of, of trying to get more activities going for kids. And, you know, this will be a good first step. I, I can say, being in the gym, I almost felt like we were doing something illegal at first, because we haven't done it in so long. It's been a year since we've been, you know, doing any activity. We did start bowling, but it's off-campus. So each, each time we've been in a gym, like, I can see it in my coaches, I can see it in, in, when the kids, but even feeling it myself, you just feel more and more comfortable each time that you do things and that you can do it safely.
I'd like to make a point, if I may. With the high-risk sports coming back in and then more sports coming in the fall, I think this is a real point where we need to make sure that we're not rushing into anything. I don't think you are, Jeff. And we need to make sure we get this right. We're talking about varsity sports. The middle schools haven't, the middle school didn't, hasn't closed. The elementary schools haven't closed. This high school has. What I'd hate to see is something to happen on a road game or, you know, when other schools are coming to us, causing something that we, you know, causes the high school to close down again, you know, affecting a lot more kids than are just on the, on the teams there. And obviously, if we can't get this right, we're not going to be able to move forward. So I was wondering if, I know that they, there's usually like an athletic contract that the kids sign. Is, could, is there a way that this could be updated for, you know, things like making sure that you're not coming to a game sick? Making sure that, you know, parents and, and students know, they can't hang around with each other after the game. They can't go and get ice cream. They can't do sleepovers, which we already know is happening at this point. If they want this to continue, we're going to need a higher level of responsibility, especially from these seniors.
Yeah, it's a great point, and we have a, we have an agreement, and we use family ID for everything, and the students had to sign an agreement that they're going to follow safety protocols, you know, and do, do what's, what needs to be done to keep their, their, their school safe, their team safe. And, and I think, I think by bringing back sports and, and, you know, other activities, obviously, but sports is what, what, what I'm talking about, is, is only going to, I think, add layers of safety, because I think before we start doing any, any basketball, our kids are out playing basketball, and they're playing at other places, and they're, they're prob, they're, they're not playing, you know, where someone's keeping an eye on them to have a mask on and to, to be following protocols, where when they're under our umbrella playing the sport, we're giving, giving them the opportunity, they can, we can, we can, you know, keep, make sure they, they follow safety protocols. So I think, and even just having a conversation with some of the, some of the student athletes the other day about staying home for the Super Bowl, you know, not going, not going over to people's houses. We have that ability when we have them together to, to get those things across and hopefully add a little bit more safety to things.
Okay, but I was wondering if there's actually something that could be put into that contract? I mean, verbal is all well and good, and I fully agree with everything you said, but something I think needs to go in there, just put something that the kid, that the students sign, that the parents sign, to show that this is not like a regular season, and this is not just, you know, the, you know, the, the boys' basketball is, could well affect girls' volleyball in the spring, that they all need to know that this is a knock-on effect.
Yep.
And if something, you know, if the school has to close again, that's everybody's done.
Right.
So I just wonder if, if something could be done with that, Peggy?
So there is, there are requirements from the Albany County DOA in terms of informed consent that the parents have to sign off on, and I know, and Jeff has added, added others, where in terms of making sure they are well, that they don't come to, to the practices or getting sick, temperature checks are being done as, as well. So the health attestation, they're not only going to be doing it in the morning before school, they're going to be doing it before gym, so that, I mean, before practices or games. So Jeff has implemented that, like, as a, as a, a second attestation. So, and we can continue to, to explore others.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Pete, I might not explain myself very well. There is an agreement on family ID that the parents and the student both had to sign about following safety protocols and one, and that, that they have signed that and will sign that when, before they play a sport.
Okay, great. And this is something that would be enforceable as much as it can be outside, so after the game, everyone's not piling in one SUV to come home, they're not always going to hang around at, you know, at the, at the same park or the same house. You know, we, they understand that we have to keep this separate. Those pickup games that they were playing down at Berkeley Park, if they want to continue to play at the school, they can't continue to do that. We can't bring any more risk in.
Yep.
Okay, oh, that's, that's, that's the main thing that I was worried about. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I did want to chime in, since we don't normally have a, we don't have our regular slides that would say this, but if anyone has a, a comment that they feel is important to, to ask or share about this process, please send it to boecomment@cohoes.org, and we'll get that email and, and get that in for discussion for this evening. Another point I wanted to bring up, and Jeff or Peggy, if you can answer me, the, the plan that we have, is that something that is public? Is that something that'll go on the website?
Yes, it was sent to families. It is on the, on the website right now under the news. We will find a, a home for it, and we'll continue to update it. There might be different considerations for volleyball, for example. You, you might have seen some of the competitive cheer specific documentation. So we'll continue to update it, and that's why we decided to, instead of having you, asking you to approve all the high-risk sports at one time, that we're going to have continued discussion on the 24th. But yes, it's on the website. And Jeff is also going to make sure it's communicated widely with, with parents, students, visiting teams. Any other questions?
Could you remind us, like, what are, as far as the, the rolling average of the 4%, what are the other sort of factors that could put a halt to this? You know, we, it was brought up about if we have to quarantine the high school or close it down, for instance, that, that would obviously have an impact on our students. But what are some of the other factors that are part of this?
So, so in terms of actually closing the high school, that also depends. So if it's because of staffing and not because of spread, so for example, sometimes, you know, one case can cause a number of staff to be impacted. So, so there's differences for when you, you can't play sports based on the, the determination of why you close. The other metrics have to do with hos- hospitalization and ICU rates, and they're all, they're all in the first page of the sports preparedness plan. And at any time, if the metrics change, then the, the team has to hold back and do the socially-distanced one-on-one or group training and not be able to compete or, or have the, you know, scrimmages or the different level of practice as well.
Thank you, Peggy. Were there any other questions or comments from board members on this topic for tonight?
Hi, this is Margaret. I don't really have a question, I just have a comment. You know, I'm, I am a little disappointed that we're not able to extend out to JV, but I understand the complexities that are involved in both the scheduling of everything and, you know, the budget implications. And, you know, we're all trying to be really careful here and not, make sure that we're not going off the mark. And so I appreciate, Jeff, all the work that you've put into this, because I know that it was kind of thrown at you last minute, and, you know, teaching full-time and, and doing this on the side, I know the enormous amount of time and effort that you've put in on your own time, and I just want you to know that it doesn't go unnoticed, and we do definitely appreciate it. And I think our kids are better for it.
Thank you.
To Margaret's point, I think, and I, and I actually really appreciate, I know it's a very difficult decision regarding JV, but I think in some cases it would be easier to say, let's just do it. And then, you know, the consequences for that aren't today, right? Those are a month down the line, so that's easy to, to say. So I really appreciate having the hard conversations now, rather than getting a month into it and then like, you know, was brought up, we have to close down all of our sports, you know?
Right. And, and those are the things I can think of right now, and like you said, that other things may pop up as we go, and, and the last thing I want to do is not, not provide an opportunity.
And Jeff, I gotta tell you, I, I believe sincerely, your, yours pain by this is probably more, more so than most. I know this isn't, this isn't a decision that, that you made easily, and, and I'm sure sleep, sleep doesn't come easy to you, because you, you want, you want to see the kids out as, as much as anyone, more than most. So I understand this is just a heart-wrenching decision for you, and I, I respect that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, for all you've done. We all understand what, what you're going through and what the kids are going through, but we do appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you. I, I did, I did touch on wrestling a little bit. I did not recommend wrestling at this time. It's probably the highest-risk sport, you know, due to the constant contact. Quite a few school districts have opted out of wrestling. Entire sections in the state have opted out of wrestling. Teams in our league have opted out of wrestling. There's been three so far in our league that are not offering wrestling. We, we do have a, another problem with wrestling and the fact that the returning coach has opted out of coaching due to COVID this year. Our, our numbers haven't been very high in that sport as well. And, you know, and there has even been some, some call to push it to, to May, and I, I don't think they fully have made the commitment to wrestling at this point, and, and, you know, in our entire section, so.
Any other questions or comments? I did, two community comments that I wanted to touch on, and, and any other community comments that I got before tonight that weren't specific to this topic will be covered at our Wednesday meeting during our regular, regularly scheduled appearance. And, but the few for this evening that I wanted to cover were, there was a note from Renee Snyder that I wanted to use, I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Huno for working so hard on this plan and giving our kids an opportunity. Also, thank you to Superintendent O'Shea for your support. And then another comment from Helen Anley reads, "Good evening. I think we are all in agreement that sports are important, but I think while looking out for the best interests of our children, we've forgotten that not every child is an athlete. When speaking about extracurricular activities, both as a district and as a community, sports has dominated the conversation. I would deeply appreciate if we took a moment to acknowledge that every single program that betters the lives of our youth is just as important as the next. I understand tonight's vote is specifically about sports and the fact that we are within state regulations to continue them, but I hope those who are so vocal for athletics to open back up will continue to be just as vocal for other programs and to help find solutions for every activity. I fear we are unintentionally impressing upon our students a message that is detrimental to their self-worth when their mental health is already in a vulnerable state. We need to do better with our language and be careful as to not put our kids in such stringent categories. Every student in Cohoes has value, whether they are an athlete, an artist, a scientist, a mathematician, a politician, a combination, or still figuring it all out. When we fail to see every child for who they are and what they offer to the world, how can we expect them to see it? Thank you all for your time and effort." And I know that this is something that we, it was touched on a little bit earlier, and I think it's confounded a little bit by the, sort of like, infrastructure and things that are in place at high levels, right? Like athletics has its own department, it has its own director, it has a whole, you know, sections and state-level programs. The same doesn't really exist to any structural degree for extracurricular programs. So I think fundamentally, there, there are some issues that exist in how things are organized, and that's not the, no fault of anyone here tonight. But I do think it's an important topic for us to raise and make sure that we are not sending the wrong message. So thank you, Helen, for, for raising that, and we will continue as a board and as a district to do everything we can to open and have safe programs and activities for students of all types.
If, if nothing else, we could at least have, get word out to the students and other, what, what our plans are, and, and so, so they, as they see the sports continuing, at, at least they hear from their, their coaches or their advisors that, that we have a plan, that we, we do, we haven't forgotten them. So as, as they see these other activities- So as, as they see these other activities going, that we at least engage them and, and let them know they're, the, as Helen said, they're all important.
We'll work on communication. Two of.
With that, could I get a, uh, motion for, from the board for tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Mrs. Geller? Mr. Pascal?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deion?
Yes.
Mr. Analy?
Yes.
And Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Any comments, questions, related to anything at all from board members? I just want to reiterate again, thank you to everyone who was involved in, in this process and continue just in, uh, even in our, you know, day-to-day operations of running the district. It's a unique year for sure. And I really appreciate the staff that we have in Cohoes, the, the effort that everyone gives to provide the best that we can for all of our students. And, um, it's not a, you know, a question in anyone's mind, or certainly, you know, in a lot of minds about our staff putting everything that they can into their jobs to, to help and provide the best opportunities that we can in this challenging environment where we're still trying to maintain everybody's health and safety as a, at most priority. So thank you to, to Jeff and to everybody that's involved in this effort. And obviously we'll continue to monitor things. And if there are changes that we need to make or whether we can uh, open things up even further, we will do that as we, as we can. With that, I don't have any other, um, public questions or comments. And our next meeting is this Wednesday at six o'clock, and we'll cover our regular agenda topics there. And, uh, with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting at six oh three.
I'll make it.
Mrs. Geller? Mr. Pascal? Mr. Jackson?
Yeah.
I'm back, sorry.
This is, okay, you said yes, right?
I did.
Mrs. Deion?
Yeah.
Mr. Analy?
Yes.
And Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Thank you. And I want to thank the board, uh, for gathering together this evening as well. So thank you.
Be well, be well, stay safe.
Yes, thank you.
See you all Wednesday.